It's seven o'clock, we're gonna start our meeting now. For this meeting to order. Our City Council on June fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Welcome to the council, welcome to those who join us, we appreciate being here. Item number two is our flexible agents that are all fixed directly by transfer.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the fiscal with liberty and justice for all.
I'm here to be honored. With our heads this time. In the beginning of this council meeting. We ask your best spirit to be here, but this is the things we're discussing. With your matters. That pertaining with Harrison City. Pretty thankful coming from the border for great blessings and freedom that we feel. On this day as we are like that. As we tend to appreciate the patriotism of the show. As well as souls who are defending our rights in this great country that we live in. We ask you for once again, your spirit here this evening. Pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank you for all your participation. To be done, item number three, our extended items. This is to approve the minutes of May tenth, twenty twenty two, and May twenty fourth is presented. Does council have that to be approved? Eighty minutes, are there any corrections or anything we need to change? Now may I motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve minutes of. May tenth, twenty twenty two, and May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two is presented.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Me are able to, I'm starting to err this couple of. A month ago, I said that we needed to roll code. We will need to do that on some items, but we still can do the. All in favor and Maria will just note. With this step down, okay? Alright, so all in favor.
Aye.
Any of those, okay, motion carries? I should have done that before, so thank you for noting. So on to item number four, business items. Item A, which is a public hearing. This is to receive input of the public with respect to the issuance of sales and franchise tax revenue bonds. And the potential economic impact. So first of all, I'd need a motion of the body to open this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing second.
Yeah, a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any thoughts? Alright, first of all, we're going to have a. In this public hearing, I have an opportunity here for Marcus Keller. Would you come up please? That's what we're talking about.
Perfect, thanks mayor. Just to give everyone an update, so we have an interested. Better so, so the public hearing today is the legal process we have to do for to issue those bonds. So at this point, we give the public time to speak. Tell the councils, mayor, staff, all their concerns, if there are any. Or ask questions that can't be addressed by the city council as well. So this is where you are able to get that input and to decide whether or not to move forward with the issuance of these bonds. So currently, after this public hearing. Our thirty days notice period will run out towards the end of this month. And so based off kind of what's going on in the interest rate market, I'm not sure everyone's kind of aware. The craziness that's happened over the past couple of days. Working with Ginny and the mayor, we've actually been able to lock in a rate last week. With a potential purchaser, so we avoided a lot of this turmoil. Potentially locked in that lower rate, we're still working through some of the credit items. Right now with the purchaser. And so just so you guys know, and kind of foresight of the mayor, as well as Ginny. And the city staff that they're able to save you. Potentially a lot of money. So if the bond does move forward, I think we do have a good rate locked in. And as well as potentially. Some additional good terms callable anytime features, so if you do want to pay it down early or refinance the bond. You don't have to pay any penalty for that. And a few other things I won't get into here, but. So just to give you an update, that's kind of where we're at right now. On the up to. Currently looking at about a six million dollar for the first bond as we discussed in prior meetings. Any questions at this point for the councilor? Concerns? Alright, I'll get out of the way for the public.
Alright, thank you Marcus. Alright, this is an opportunity for the public to come forward, we have three minutes at the podium. Please state your name and.
Gary Robinson. I'm curious, you're putting a public hearing out. And you don't even say what you want to use the money for on a bond. First of all, that seems kind of counterproductive. You should be saying, okay, we want to issue a bond for money to do something. You should have a purpose for a bond. You don't even say, school board, they have a purpose where they have a bond. And you should be saying, okay, we want to have a purpose. For ten million dollars to build schools or whatever. And so. You don't even say that. And you should say that. So you shouldn't even hold a public hearing, tell your, say what you want to do with money. And in, and you don't even have very many people, you should. You should have put this in your bulletin. We're going to have a public hearing, we want to have a bond for ten million dollars or six million dollars. We want to build such and such. And have advance notice. And then maybe people would show up. You know, this is, you know, just. This is like doing stuff behind closed doors. It's really, it's saying that you guys. It's like when I lived in Mexico for ten years, it's like a police state, they have a police state in Mexico. Where everything is done behind closed doors. It's a dictatorship in Mexico and Canada runs the same way now. It's a dictatorship in Canada and America is going the same way with Biden is the president of the United States. And that's the way you guys are running it right now. There's a dictatorship in the city council. You're doing it behind closed doors. The way this, this public hearing is running here, this, you're not telling the public. What you want to use money for on a bond.
Jeff Beers, two ninety five east left to north. I kind of got blindsided by this because I've never heard anything tell me the other day that those even need this meeting. I think this kind of money. Shouldn't be voted on by residents of the city. Do we want to spend it, do we not want to spend it? We're wanting to a deep recession that's going to last a year or two. Interest is climbing, construction costs have just gone skyrocket, just way out of sight. Within a couple of years, things will look back off. Construction costs should invest money back, hopefully back to normal. But. Building this facility. I think is a little already timed because. We're just getting out of COVID, people are just barely finding, starting to get caught up on some bills. The county has nailed us with a massive property tax in Harrisburg properties. Now it's like the city's going for some more. And I'm sure the school district will too. So it's just stripping all people's money out of their pockets. Some people can afford it, some can. All these around the part of our city, a lot of people can't afford this kind of increase. I think there should be, like Gary said, some more time that the public hear about it, show them what they want. What's it really going to cost us, I know when I was on council fourteen, they presented a thing for us, it's going to cost us ten million dollars. That was twenty fourteen. And now, what expenses of what? Construction costs, wiring, plumbing, all that stuff, concrete, this, it's just gone crazy. So it's just starting to build something now, four times what we have right now. I think it's very wise. Think of, if this did go through. I think most of the people who want to run for reelection probably won't make it. Because people won't stand for it. And that's the only way they can come back, since they don't want it. I think we should be talking, showing everybody, like, here's, what are we going to do with this funding? What's it for, is it really needed, versus just wanted? Is it something we can really afford, I noticed in the last meeting. There's a two hundred thousand dollar deficit that's got to be taken care of. That tells me if you're in a deficit, we really have the money to be paying for this kind of stuff. Do we have the income? I know there's another big store by Walmart, opens their doors. Okay, that's why I just wanted to say that we just need to think this a little more.
Anything else? Alright, not like a motion to close, but a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I'll say that.
Motion to close in a second, I'll let me.
Aye.
No one, anyone else?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Move on, thank you Marcus.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, our public hearing. To receive public comments for or against a resolution. Adopting the final city agency and district budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three, through the city. I'll quote. This is also a public hearing, I'll need a motion to open.
Don't move.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any of those, motion carries? First of all, we'll have a presentation by Jenny Knight. This, thank you mayor.
We, in May, the beginning of the first meeting in May, we adopted the tentative budget. And we set at that time this public hearing to take comment, public comment on the final budget. We went ahead and decided because of all the budget changes and anticipated. Additional public hearings that we'll have in the future, we decided to go ahead and have this public hearing tonight to receive. Public comment on the final budget. Although we will not be adopting a final budget this evening. Because we'll be going through the treatment taxation process that that hearing will be set in August. But nothing has changed during the budget numbers from the tentative budget adoption.
Any? Thank you Jenny. Alright, this is a chance for those of them, those of the audience have the opportunity to come to the podium. You have, once again, the same process, let's state your name. You have three minutes.
How much money you're spending COVID money?
This is public comments, so you just tell me what you want, we aren't, we aren't going to talk.
I can get, I can ask you a question, right?
You can ask a question, does not mean we not to respond right now, so ask the questions, we'll take care of them.
I want to ask you, how much money, COVID money, did you get?
You can ask that, you could still comment, this is your three minutes.
Okay, I want to know how much COVID money you've got and how much you're spending. The spend over on building over on seven fifty, or Lee Station. That's part of the, this coming budget for this coming year. That's part of the, this coming budget. Correct?
This is your three minutes to have a comment, this is not a guideline.
And I, okay. And I don't think you should be using. COVID money. That should be COVID. For, you know, COVID. Not to build a new building, which this, this building right here is more than apt. For police. Handle everything, it's not outdated. Handle plenty of police. For everything that handled. Contrary to what people think. And it would be. Contrary to. Without being put through all the, put through the public. Up front. Through the newsletter, whatever. You know, it's hidden. From the public. It'll probably, you've, maybe you've got ten million dollars, but it's hidden.
You have about ten seconds.
Okay. That's why, you know.
Here's. I don't know what was on, what is on the budget, what's causing the big increase and stuff, but we have to go through, through the tax, taxation. And raise taxes and stuff for it. But, and I was, I hope the bond was, or hope the budget was posted, so we could have looked at it. So we could have seen this. But I would hope that. Well, I hope that it was posted, if it wasn't, I hope that before any decisions are made, that it is posted so that the public can. Can read and find out what we're actually voting on and what we're actually discussing.
Anyone else? If not, I'll have a motion for council to close this.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. They'll move on and close that public hearing. Thank you, thanks for those that commented also. Item C, this is discussion possible action toward the bid for architectural services with public works building located at approximately seven fifty north seventy west.
As I was, as we're cutting the memos, the public works, city administrator, mayor, city engineer worked diligently. To get an RFP out for the design of the architectural building of the new public works facility that we're trying to build on seven fifty west. We have three million applicants, we sat down with it, with those applicants, had interviews. Attached to your packet should be the, the award, the winning did of Blaylock, their presentation. And again, we felt due to cost. And design and the city's needs for growth and expansion in the future. They were the best suited to take on this project and help us design the best. Not only exterior looking, but also beneficial for work-related purposes for the public works building. To then move forward and start working on getting like seven fifty west properties ready to go with our city center.
Councilman, questions for Justin? They have done other buildings in other areas and showed it. In their presentation, they showed what they can do, what options they need to help us with.
And very much so, we didn't just want some box concept, we would. They really stuck out with their engineering in, in, in design and putting. Different concepts in to lighting and windows and things that it wasn't just. Going to be a warehouse or a box looking structure. That's going to be part of the town center that we hopefully envision and will get through.
Which I think that Justin's very much. Told everyone he wants to make sure it's, the setting is beautiful.
Were they out of gas?
They have Salt Lake.
What have they done here in Weaver County?
So they haven't done much in Weaver County, they just finished the Cache County. Facility, they did do the consulting in Florida North Ogden for their building, but they didn't, they weren't a design architect. They did do Salt Lake County, like I said, Cache County. Public Works Building at Salt Lake County. This is the Cache County facility right here. So they came highly recommended by everybody that we reached out to. They've also done a few UDOT projects.
And I liked how they said that Justin should sit down with everyone and make their wish list. Make sure that we only do this once.
This is for public works building, it's not for all the underground.
The underground will be taken care of by Jones and Associates.
Okay, okay.
With this, we're actually taking in a new approach, usually you do a, a design bid build process. With Jones being on board and now Blaylock being on board, we're actually looking at sending out for our construction management team. And have the general contractor on board to design. To really help keep an eye on the cost and, and keep it down. With, with knowing that some supplies are six months out. If we're ahead of the game and we have that construction team on board, they can actually start purchasing the materials now, we'll stock them. On, on site until the design's completed and then we can put it there.
Can you fill this way, save one more minute?
Save a lot more money in the back end, yes.
And it'll save time.
It'll save time and money. Knowing that we are on a little bit of a time crunch with the Salt Lake Public Works Facility over on Washington Boulevard. We've looked at this, the way to say, to be most cost effective, time efficient. And, you know, the concept to be aesthetically pleasing for the entirety of the city and the potential growth.
And this interview lasts like an hour and a half or something?
Yes.
It was very.
Their initial interview lasted an hour and a half, when we have a secondary follow-up interview with one of their. Other subcontractors that do a lot of structural engineering for the inside of the buildings. As far as lift systems, cranes, things of that nature, how, how the ventilation will work, how everything will work that way. So we really did put them through a process that were very receptive and very responsive to everything.
Any other questions for Justin? Thank you Justin.
Thank you.
No hard questions, any discussion? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award a bid to Blaylock and Associates for architectural services. The Public Works Building located at approximately seven fifteen north seventy west Harrison.
Motion second, please.
I'll say it.
Yeah, motion in a second, this is a roll call vote. My quarter.
That's okay.
Thank you. I'm not going to be able to see that.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I know it's not in this order, I don't have any. That's, thank you. Okay, moving on, item D, discussion possible actions toward Harrison School Board is. Five thirty six, which is utility fees that we each have updated, Justin, back.
Justin Schinzel, Public Works Director. As we all know, due to costs of everything, inflation, fuel prices. The city cannot. Stay status quo on our utility fees. We would hit with a fifty thousand dollar a year increase through our central Weaver Sewer Systems. That the city, we just can't do that. With that, we also, prices for our annual cleaning, routine maintenance. Both the sewer and the stormwater has gone up. We're trying to. Keep that as close and minimal as possible, as you can see. It's only a dollar for the sewer, fifty cents for the stormwater. And then. When doing the budget discussions, we look at our streetlight program. And we've been having a lot of issues through maintenance and with how we actually pay for our streetlights. Right now, it's currently the. Part of the tax revenue that's brought into the city is, is covering the cost of the streetlights for the power. And that needs to be utility itself and paid for, paying for that power. How streetlights, maintaining those streetlights for the best. So we, we look to raising that up to two dollars, so. For monthly toll, we'll raise the utility fees by five dollars and fifty cents per household. It's, it is, you know, a good jump, but it's not a double or a triple in the increase like. I had seen other cities in the past, we're trying to keep it as close to running. At the break even point of, as we can for the city. We also have to have a little bit in slush just to protect us if something does happen, a major emergency, a road heat. A storm rain break, sewer backup, you know, those all cost quite a bit of money and we just need to be able to protect ourselves. Yeah, your fees will go up about five dollars and fifty cents per month.
Is that the same for residential, not commercial?
Commercial will go up a little more. Yeah, commercial, the ERUs are based a little different, so they will go up, this is a breakdown on just a residential VR.
The streetlights is, that's been coming out of something else, right?
So. So, streetlights, we, we've always had the fifty cent utility fee for the last few years. But that was just for minor maintenance of the streetlights. The actual paying for the energy was coming out of tax revenue money. And so we've changed that to where now it will be its own utility. As it should be and as it's set up in every other city that, that I've dealt with, this, the streetlights are their own utility. So it's just something, you know, it's, it's a dollar fifty increase on that to what it, what it was.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Questions for Justin? If not, we have a motion, please. Thank you Justin.
Motion to stop, like, almost without Harrison School Board minutes. Five thirty six for updated utility fees.
One second.
Yeah, a motion in a second, a roll call on this also. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, this is a discussion possible action toward Harrison School Resolution twenty two dash sixteen. Which is a resolution updating the solid waste collection disposal and recycling fees. And then Harrison School Cabinet Power Reservation fees, Jenny?
Thank you mayor. This actual resolution was a combined effort of staff and. Jill, our city treasurer Jill, that's put together the garbage memo here for you. As you're all aware, increased costs from our garbage as we, over the course of the last few months. As you're all aware, increased costs from our garbage as we, over the course of the last few months, from them conducting our, our products, the best. Of our ability to make sure that we are charging appropriate residents for the amount of counts that they have. And additionally making sure that they're being charged through our utility billing as we contract a bond as to for that utility billing. We're making sure that those. Chargers are being appropriately dispersed among the homes that have those counts. In addition to that, as we researched it, we found that we had a deficit in the amount we were collecting to the amount that the city is paying out for the garbage services. And then as we anticipated, the city was contacted by Waste Management because of the cost of. Garbage services that is up about ten percent. From what they were, we were paying last year. So we were already in a deficit from what we were collecting. And then the garbage service rates were increased by ten percent from Waste Management, which. Caused this increase that you're seeing. So we were anticipating a bit around a dollar. Correct, Jill, around a dollar in the initial assessment, but. When we received feedback from Waste Management that their fees were going up, we had to increase that enough to cover that cost. So Jill's prepared this spreadsheet that shows all of the utility services. And the average home will go up, including garbage services and the utility fees that Justin just went over. Eight dollars and seventy four cents for the new utility increase there. In conjunction with that and your, Jill's here available if you have any questions on those garbage services. The second section is open for a little bit of feedback from council through the. Assessment process for safety fees. We went over the cabin and also the Bowery reservation. The cabin fees are outlined here, what we're currently charging for the use of the cabin. We have a small meeting of a hundred dollars, the family party of one hundred and fifty dollars, a wedding or open houses, one hundred dollars, the security deposit is three hundred. The cost, this is an average annual cost breakdown that we did, including maintenance and repairs. Over the course of the last seven, six, seven years, I wanted the bills that the city's been paying and the maintenance and repairs in our. Our fiscal budgets. It's an average of fifteen thousand, something seventeen dollars to operate the cabin. And with the average revenue over the last six years, we're bringing in eight thousand seven hundred twelve dollars. And over the course of a year, we had, we can anticipate an average of fifty reservations for the use of the cabin. I did kind of throw out the COVID years because the numbers were angry when we shut down the cabin for reservations. So I went back a little further in our cabin. Budgets to, to see what that cost was and it, it still was about fifty reservations per year. So I'm actually just requesting a little bit of feedback from. From council based on some staff conversations that we've had as department heads. We wanted to revisit how you, how you feel about a non-resident reservation at a higher rate. That was included in the reservation in case we can always remove that and we don't want to consider that. And the reason we pulled that out was because of. Damage that the cabin was sustaining at the time. We opted to just allow it for reservations. What we're finding now is people are typically just reaching out to a Harris School resident to sort of, for their, their purposes anyway. Uh, we did increase the reservation fees in the resolution by fifty dollars per reservation type. And another thing that was too late to include in your packet, but in our department head meeting yesterday. We discussed an option that we thought we might present to you of an hourly rate for the cabin based on. So what we, what we found is some people reserve the cabin and they want it all day. They open it at eight AM, ten PM. We do all automatically have a concern with the cabin, but they do know and recognize that they're responsible for anything that takes place during that timeframe. One option is to do an hourly rate. We proposed or tossed around that staff need fifty dollars an hour, an average of three hours, it would be a hundred fifty dollars. That is a typical reservation time for a family party, not including a setup time that they may or may not go in. That would also open up an opportunity for us to do whole four reservations in a day. We wanted to set the hours where they want reservations at different times. That's just something, so we're just looking for feedback. We can increase them, we can leave them. We wanted, again, when we were doing the assessment for the fees, what the city's paying in comparison to the revenue that we're receiving for these amenities. We wanted to make sure you have the appropriate information to make that decision. And then the third element is Bowery, which Brian has prepared a memo in this hearing for your. For any questions that you may have. Our current rental fee is fifty dollars for the Bowery. It does not include the sound system. If they want to reserve the sound system, it's an additional thirty dollars. The Bowery deposit is one hundred fifty dollars and with the sound system, it's two hundred dollars. And he did a kind of a, an assessment with the neighboring cities on what their. Costs are for their rentals and we are consistent with a full day non-resident rental with our neighboring cities. You can see that in the now. So some of his discussion points. A little further down on his memo that are open for your feedback. He did include the city staff workload. The, the fact that the restaurants would be cleaned on a, a daily basis regardless because it is a public park. And, but he did include the, the power washing that the staff does for that service, which may or may not be done. Because it is a public park regardless of reservations. He did a cost breakdown here and so we're looking. We did toss around the idea as well of a half day reservation for the Bowery, giving more options for people to reserve it. And increasing the sound system rental fee. He's included a recommended increase of, of twenty dollars from thirty to fifty dollars. And an increase in Bowery rental recommendation from fifty dollars to seventy five. This is also an opportunity for us to create a fund for Bowery to sustain itself a little bit more. The maintenance fees and costs come out of the general fund currently. We could create a budget where it comes. Out of an actual Bowery maintenance budget, similar to a utility fee. And he did include a recommendation of a hundred dollar fee for non-resident reservations. So we've tried to provide you with as much information as we can for you to evaluate those fee schedules. Obviously, if you can't meet them. That is an option as well. So I kind of left the resolution. Especially, yes, sorry, I was just trying. So the, the resolution includes the. Garbage service fees that we proposed. The cabin reservations and we can exclude or include any of these that you would like to discuss and can make decisions on. And there's the Bowery.
Correct the numbers for the proposed, or we have close to what? Even out what it costs us.
Or, so it's, it's anticipated costs. If I did not do the fifty reservations. With the new cost, I did not assess that. I do believe there would still be a deficit based on how much.
We still have termite problems over there.
There are a few, uh, bug beetles that were, were getting mitigated in the tentative budget. And that is on this that you guys passed in, in May. There was a section that, that we're actually doing a total repair and replace the flooring through the cabin. And the budget at that length, about twenty thousand dollars after getting that out to bid, it's more like twelve thousand dollars to. We do all the flooring throughout the entirety of the cabin, getting rid of all the carpet and the, and putting in that laminate wood floor. Just to kind of brighten it up, clean it up, make it more desirable to me. So. This last year, we had about six thousand dollars in maintenance costs. Who's due to some famous issues and some door lock issues. We had to upgrade some hardware, software. For the door lock system, that was about two thousand dollars. So as of right now, we're not trying, we, we know that the cabin's probably not gonna make. Money. We're just trying to get that F set a lot, a little, a little bit closer to what, what it costs for us because. It costs to clean, it costs to maintain, even if nobody rents it out, we still have some sort of. Heating in the windows so the pipes don't freeze and burst. We'd have to, you know, keep it clean.
I, I'd be, still be there and we're close to opening it up to non-residents. Here's. We begged the towers of B to just close it to residents only. We were over there. Busting up parties, drunken weddings, people jumping over fences and into yards and scare canyon. Landowners Association went to blows one night at a full scale riot and. Finally, we just said, no, journals get busted off the walls. Finally, I think with Mayor Hendricks, we just said, no, please make this. I'd, I'd be okay with the Bowery letting anybody, but I think the way it's working out, don't get too cheap. As far as the cabin.
It's six feet away. I mean, you can, like, any set, the people are coming. And finding a Harris School resident to rent it. So.
If somebody's responsible.
Yeah.
For those, those drunk and bloody parties, you had no clue who they were or anything else. Underage drinkers. Yes, they ignore the signs, they go off.
Yeah. They, they said you can draw a couple days, I think. I would see courts, residents only, do the. I think we have a better handle on what goes over the final of the panel.
Especially because of the, the electronic system and having somebody not have access and they got their information in. No matter what, I think it's a little bit easier to identify the person that's in there versus how I used to be. I mean, it's up to you.
I think we need to keep the presence. I'm looking at some people in the audience, they're shaking their heads, so. It's up to our public who's here. Stay with.
Comes down, pulling down the person's responsibility. It's easier to control people who are Harris School, even though they go through somebody. And do that, we have somebody here hopefully to ask, no matter what you do in the heart of our town. Our so happens, that's responsible. Not that I'd like our assistants to do that, but that we have property here we have to take. I did have a question as far as if we go to half day reservations, was that due to increase the workload and maintaining the cost? There's going to be more. And I mentioned the Bowery, that would be the same, more so on the cabin.
The, the workload and costs are gonna be the same. Due to the fact that. We're already there. We're already, it's, it's something that we check out daily. One of my guys every day of the week that we launch goes through the cabin. We have an outside cleaning company that comes in and cleans twice a week. So again, if we do a half day to a full day reservation, it really boils down to. Are we getting the numbers of rentals up to then increase the revenue? To offset the deaths.
That's, I understand that. I can see the positive part of that. We can go into an harder way. It's a nice little idea. It's just covering your costs and definitely seeing how much this is what it costs us in the silver.
Yeah, and as Jenny did a wonderful breakdown of, of what the u- utility fees are, the. The maintenance fees, the cleaning fees, you know, we, we know that we're. Not even bringing in ten thousand dollars a, a year and, and we're spending about fifteen. Which, you know, not everything in the city's always going around to a, to a balanced budget, but. We try to keep it as close as we can.
On this one, it said with non-resident fee. That's not in effect right now. Okay, so we don't have to do that. But the hourly, we just take care of everything, just do an hourly rate and get rid of all the, when we have a family meeting or a.
I'm okay if we go to the half, you know, half day and stuff like that. I think personally, I think everything should go up at least fifty dollars. A wedding should go up at least another hundred, well, a hundred fifty dollars. Because nowhere in this world, you can get a place up to actually five hundred fifty bucks, even six hundred bucks. That still exists. But the problem I have, the thing I wanna see personally is a security deposit. That positive cleaning, security deposit should be. Hundreds of dollars. Because now, when you put that kind of money up, you better make sure it's okay when you. I don't care, maybe not even, you know, but what I'm saying is, it needs to be able to, they need to see that and say, wow. We need to make sure this is taken care of and everything is back to order, not just three hundred bucks, but they get hurt if they don't do it. That's my opinion, so.
My concern with the half day or the hourly event is my family's experience when we used to have day rentals. You know, second half, going to a mess. And I think that as people walk out, they call someone else and come in. It's very upsetting.
Maybe that's where the rental or the costs is.
If someone's got it cleaned up, it was us cleaning up the people before us.
That's my view.
Their mess.
Does that make sense?
Yes, Justin, you guys can't come out, but we know it's something by coming back and cleaning it after that.
Yeah, and that makes sense. I was saying to the whole thing, that's fine. I, I personally think you need to make, because there are times you go in thereafter and it's not up to what we want, right?
Very much so. And, and at that point, we contact Jenny and let her know that we need to hold some back, back some of the deposit.
Yeah, well, and I think it should be that you go, it, cut and dry, if it isn't up to par, you aren't getting the back back and it's gonna make you work. I mean, everywhere else you go, I do rent facilities, they do that. You know, they have large security deposits, that cleaning.
Is, is that something they just put on a card, hold it so it's not charged to them? If I can see. Probably being a family that.
Then they're gonna need to find that that's just because they're protecting the city.
I understand that. I guess we're also providing a benefit for the citizens.
And I'm not saying there has to be a thousand dollars. We need to make enough. To cover and also, okay, if something happened and these people, the next people find out, wow, yeah, they did. They ended up paying. We're gonna make sure this is clean, no damage, no nothing, because that's a lot of work.
There's a couple things that have, that our cabins stands out from. One of them being that it is more of a reception type of a facility. A lot of cities have a senior center, part of their city hall that they prescribe out, like the resident, you know, we have this as a mental. But the cabin's unique in that. People want to use it for weddings. It's more of a. An amenity of that sort. So it was really hard for me to compare the costs of other cities' reservations. They were very low compared to ours. I did not do an assessment versus how many regular family parties versus weddings. I just lumped them all in this reservation number. We could, we could have driven that down to a smaller detail of that. But to your point about the. As it stands with all day reservations, we have the cleaning crew that comes in on Saturday night. So the cabin is literally checked. After every reservation, because we check it during the week and we check the weekend, the cleaners check it on the weekend. But we do, we hold very few deposits. Fortunately, most people are maintaining things. When we do, we try to have. A great amount of documentation for that to show why we held our deposit. When we went to the online reservations, that's when we implemented the ten week reservation. When we went to the online reservations, that's when we implemented the ten-week reservation. Ahead of the date that you'd be for the credit card purposes, because that's the limit that we can, we don't hold the deposit. We can then charge it after they have, they reserved it and we found an issue, so.
Also, the fees, I, I was, in my personal opinion, I think they should go up because, one, we're still losing it. Size will never work. And I don't think, I mean, we don't have to make it crazy, but even if you took, like I said, you took the cabin off for a wedding. Five fifty or six hundred bucks, I mean, there's nowhere in this whole valley that you're going to find anything except, you know, I mean, for that cost. To, to use for things like that, and the other events, I mean, if you took them up a little bit faster, I think. Security, I think, should.
For feedback for, for staff, is that, is everybody agree with that? Do you want to raise the, the wedding, no, amount to a larger amount? I have it set for a resolution and it's worth it, which means I recommend a higher amount.
I think you could raise a higher amount, run the business of the valley, maybe start some black. So, Sam, I mean, we don't need to charge it that much.
So what would your, what would you now?
Whatever we can.
I, we just increased it to four fifty with this resolution, so if you want to go up higher than that, just. You were saying the charge rate is an hour, maybe an hour, an hour, which can't go into decorating and have a thing for that's a five-hour charade. So that's fine.
I think you should go six or seven, maybe six fifty.
Six fifty. Just so we know what to put, include in the record. So you want, for once a wedding, six fifty, what do you want for anything else? Yeah, what if someone's just going to rent it, what?
And have we raised the family activity and uh, okay, all right, that's fine. I just see the security deposit, I can need to go off it, but.
What's the reason about, Justin, how far is three buildings below the cost down there?
It, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Um, really, all three hundred of cost is, is the cost of, of an emergency cleaning. If they got, you know, if they got really, um, really a security deposit. If we did anywhere in the ballpark, five hundred to seven hundred and fifty would really put them on the line to say, hey. You, you have a chance to actually hit where, where it really hurts.
So, it's seven fifty, yeah. So to our expert.
So everyone's in agreement, the security deposit will be increased to seven fifty.
Yeah, I want to get it back if everything's focused better.
I think a couple. On the Bowery, I don't see why, you've taken more upon that.
So the Bowery was increased.
I have a question, is there a lot of work being done there?
The weekends are always for the Bowery, pretty much, the weekend, the weekdays very, uh, but weekends are popular, pretty much the most for the cabin.
Brian, do we do half-day rentals now on Bowery?
No, we don't. Uh, and I would just add that the cities that I talked to, there were a couple that had tried half-day rentals. And they went away from it, not for instant, but uh, what they run into is when you have a second person coming in and it's not clean. Then if they're putting a security deposit down, now they have to clean first persons either before their party, which is upsetting. Or they have to clean it at the end, end of the party, or they lose their security deposit, so. And, and one of you said, we, we don't come in unless the splash pad's open, we're not in on Saturday, we won't come in on Sunday, we won't check these things. Even if you had a, a dead time of, you know, two or three hours in between rentals, you're still going to be dealing with possibly garbage from the, the first person's. Another thing they ran into is people staying later than their time and people showing up earlier for their time. Where the police have to be called and settle this disagreement, so there, there were some issues there, they just flat went away from it. That doesn't mean you can't try it, and we can't go away from it, but it's kind of the feedback I, I got, what's your view? Uh, my gut feeling would be not to do half-day rentals, personally.
Let's also the possibility that someone reserves it and there's somebody that just comes and uses it, right?
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, it's, it's an open Bowery until somebody gets there and puts the sign up and says, reserve, so.
We're responsible for cleaning up the yards.
Yeah, so one other question, two hundred dollar security deposit, does that even make a dent if you've got to go and do something?
Yeah, I mean, we're doing it ourselves, so I mean, we're not calling it, the, the cleaning company to come in, so, I mean, we're already at work, so. Right, yeah, I mean, it hits us a little bit, I don't, I mean, you could certainly bump it up a little bit to give people a little more skin in the game, so it's just like we're talking about the cabin.
I guess I'm concerned about like the sound system, the trans, things like that. Personally, five hundred dollars is pretty cheap. You know, we just have many standards, once again, it's very expensive project to place thousand dollars.
Right, right.
So on that one, I could personally see that you have to put a large deposit down, because if you use the sound system, it can go maybe not as large. But again, we're going to take, as a city, we're going to be boss. Unless we, if, if there is a mess, hopefully, we never have to do that, that's great. But it's like I said, if we make it enough, they know that they're serious, if you don't, you're going to leave a mess.
Staff, we typically only kept the security, security deposit from the Bowery when they don't return the science of the keys. It's really difficult, since it's a public park, for us to show that the mess was created by the reservation department that had it reserved. So we typically only keep that security deposit if we don't get the keys and the science back. But that's simply been our practice, because it's very difficult, because it's without cameras, it's just without somebody checking it every time our reservation leaves. It's nearly impossible for us to show that it's a public park.
Right, but then.
But I'm happy to do whatever the council wants.
And that makes a great point, so that's fine, so then let's just say, let's up the security deposit, because I'm thinking of just saying, this is fifty bucks, and I can go.
Sounds as if it's ever been damaged. Uh, the case has, uh, the sound system itself, itself, that's not for the Bowery, but I have noticed over the years, the, when there was a cordless mic. In the, the cabin unit that ended up missing, and so I think that something you run into with double. But we don't even go in and check it Saturday night either, so one thing you run into is somebody steals the cordless mic, you know, Saturday morning, and somebody else has it running Sunday morning, the cordless mic is missing. And there's nobody there to follow a checklist that says, this was here, now it's not, and the people Sunday get deemed with it, but it wasn't there to begin with. What do you do with that?
Give them the checklist, they check everything on. Could you develop something like that?
It'll be a checklist, yeah.
As you come in, this, this, I mean, when you rent a car, you walk around the car, you mark any nick, you mark any bump, you mark any wheelchair, all that.
And that's usually what's something that's working there this way.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, if, if they are the checks, and that situation comes up, they can say, this wasn't here. These are the things that came up, then you deal with it, but I, I just think two hundred dollars and like, versus the fifty dollars that rent, okay, that's fine. But if there is something wrong. It will happen, but, you know, things are getting weird by the week. And so you never know, so I would rather see us protect ourselves a little bit than just.
So, we're all in agreement that half-day rental is not an option for either.
Anything.
How about the resident, non-resident from now?
I think it's okay at the Bowery. They rent the non-resident, we have a non-resident fee now for the Bowery, so.
It's non-resident only.
We have a lot of people call and ask them, so.
Yeah, I, I talked to a couple actually in the last two weeks that wanted to reserve the Bowery for family reunions and our residents.
The dates are open, the rest is seven.
It would be easier if staff, if we do it all or nothing for both, so that there's no confusion that they're allowed to do it for Bowery and not for the cabin, it may just be easy to have. Thank you, just throw that out there.
Yeah, it's just a residence. I can say, I didn't know somebody who was.
All in agreement on a residence only as well? And the security deposit. Well, this is an increase, it's one hundred fifty, I'm sorry that I didn't have that spelled out for resolution. It's currently a hundred fifty dollars for a regular reservation and two hundred dollars for this sound system. We were bumping it to two hundred dollars across the board.
So two hundred for Bowery and two hundred for the sound system.
Just.
So they don't have an option to not have the sound system, you're going to include it, that's what that sounds like, right?
The reservation fee for the sound system would be fifty extra, additional dollars, but the security deposit would be the same whether you're getting the sound system or not.
Yeah, that's a problem. Things getting broken up with there, people are rented. This tape, I'm done. I mean, I turned all the tables and break them up. I'll say three, three good.
I don't want to do the sound system, I'm seven five, first one. I don't want to make it. I have it, I think, I know what's going on, so. I hear some worse situations.
Seventy-five for the sound system, so.
I think the two hundred.
Yes.
Direction two.
I'm okay with that, but.
Yeah.
I would prefer to raise the security deposit. Raise it to three hundred. Does it cost them anything if they, like, you're happy?
So.
Seventy-five for the sound system, three hundred.
Thank you, okay. So I'll review back to the date, the full-day rental to residents only at seventy-five dollars, the sound system rental at seventy-five dollars, and the security deposit increased to three hundred.
And when does this want to affect? This will want to affect on future, so anybody that's already reserved it, go under the old system or, this will be all new reservations after. Is that, is that the first thing that we needed to decide?
There was a lot.
There was a, yes, so we, so just, I'll just review the resolution, but I please, so the solid waste collection. garbage waste and recycling fees are outlined here, increased from sixteen dollars five cents to eighteen dollars twenty-four cents. Again, it's increased from six dollars ninety cents to seven dollars ninety cents. Recycling fees goes from four forty-five to five ninety-eight, with the second, four forty-five to five ninety-nine. We are increasing the resident fees for the cabin reservations for a small meeting with no food and from one hundred dollars to one hundred fifty dollars. We are increasing the family party from one hundred fifty to two hundred dollars. We are increasing the current fee for a wedding or open house from four hundred dollars to six hundred fifty dollars. And we are increasing the security deposit for all the other reservations to seven hundred twenty dollars. Excuse me, Jenny, can you, in the audience, please, if you were to have a conversation, take it outside. Thank you. Uh, we are removing the, the proposed option to even reserve the cabin to non-resident, so the non-resident option. The Bowery reservation fees are changed from fifty dollars to seventy five, seventy five dollars for a full-day rental. And the sound system rental is increased to seventy-five dollars and the security deposit is increased to three hundred dollars. The only thing they don't have a note on is whether you want residents or non-resident, excuse me, non-residents to be eligible for the Bowery, you can make that decision on that.
So you.
It's like no, there's a no matter.
That's awesome. Okay.
Can you tell me one more time, Jenny, what the garbage fee went to?
The garbage fee first can increase from sixteen dollars and five cents to eighteen dollars and twenty-four cents.
Thank you. Yeah.
Sounds a lot in that resolution, thank you for, all that work, thank you, Bill. Any more discussion or anything, everyone's clear on how we decide? Okay. Are you ready for motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that would be, uh, resolution twenty-two, yeah, sixteen, as. You can sign up on this.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in the second, and roll call, please, Councilmember Loveland.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wise.
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes.
Yes.
Thank you, I'll show you the carries. Hey, this is, I have a discussion possible action to adopt the twenty twenty-two annual sewer report.
So due to state regulations, um, every year we have to do an annual sewer report, also an annual stormwater report. Stormwater report comes in later on in the year, but sewers right now, so. They just send me kind of a template that I have to go through and fill out, and, and it's attached in your packet. Really, what their concerns are is to find out if there was any major backups or, um, problems within our system. Again, this for us, we didn't have any, any major backups or any problems, um, we do not have any lift stations, we do not do our own treatment. So, so it's pretty straightforward, we, we're just kind of a, a flow-through system. Then we collect it and ship it on down the central, we had a very high cost, as you guys all got to see tonight. But, um, it, it does really help us a bunch that we don't have to do our own collection, our own ponds, lagoons, so on and so forth. But yeah, we had about ten new sewer connections to the system this year, um, the majority of those being the water hole subdivision. That is now, you can see, almost starting to, to build up on that development of. Hopefully, that major link increases over the next twenty-four, over the next twelve months. We're, we're anticipating a big uptick in building in the next twelve months, so. Any questions, concerns about our sewer system or anything? We did do a, a small, um. Sewer manhole lining, we, we identified about ten manholes that due to the toxicity of the gases. That the cement was deteriorating and water infiltration was getting into the manholes. Uh, we did a twenty-five thousand dollar project this year. And we put this polyurethane coating on the inside, it's bright orange, so there's some manholes that pop open and. And it's brighter than a manhole than it is outside, but, but it is, it is a very good product, and they guarantee it for, for a ten-year guarantee. If it fails within those ten years, they'll come out, we spread it, fix the, fix the issues and expand.
Thank you, Justin, any questions for Justin on this?
I've also, we dropped the twenty twenty-two annual sewer. Also.
I have a motion in the second, all of you.
Aye, aye.
Any thoughts? I have change, discussion, discussion possible action for twenty twenty-two road made its projects, you want to change this?
You guys seen me yet? So, due to the, uh, the circumstances, there, there's a section of two thousand north. Right out of the apartments that has quite the speed jump in it. Due to some settling around some manhole and some water valves, so we've reached out to three different private companies. Got this, we are not going to do the work until after July of twenty twenty-two. So it's on next year's budget, but we are in a kind of a closed time frame. And we can get in there and get it fixed prior to school being started again on old, at old rack. So that's why we've got to you today, um, we are setting a place. We are setting in place a procurement policy. I just wanted to be above board that when we when we spend um excess of ten thousand dollars that it's dropped before council and it's it's made public. That people can know that they were not just using funds however we see fit. This is actually uh an important thing to fix this real way temporarily. Hopefully with the development of that moment and some other developments right there on two thousand. I have in a five-year schedule to actually mill down and totally replace about the first two inches of of asphalt on two thousand. To give it a a smooth surface, brand new, no no patches, cuts. To really clean that two thousand up. As they just did to Washington Mobile to the.
Any questions for Justin on this? Motion, please.
We the motion is we accept the action on the twenty twenty-two.
Have a motion in the second. This is the most money, so it'll be a roll call. Uh, councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wise?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item H, this is a discussion possible action to improve the surplus of Harrisville takes to a rapid fire.
So we're asking the surplus our firearms. Normally, these are eight years old. Normally, we try to. Sorry. Wait till they're about ten, but with the current ammunition, it's really hard to get forty-five caliber ammunition out now plus it's expensive. We have enough money in the budget this year to actually purchase the new firearms. With the sale of these, that will go towards the holsters, the weapon lights and the red dot sights for the new guns. In the next budget session, so we'll get the firearms this budget. Buy all the stuff when they come in.
Are you going with that?
Nine millimeters, yes, instead of forty-five. I think it's a a real perception issue at this point too where. The culture is going right now where we have a large caliber firearm. I mean, the perception of that's probably coming where it's going to cause us some issues, so I think we need to look at that as well.
Yeah, the FBI has done some studies where these non-49MMs are getting as many one-shot stops as the larger caliber. Advantage is carry carry more, you can purchase more for the same amount of money, and it's kind of a universal.
And it's widely available right now.
Right, yeah. And the particular firearm they're uh they're looking at. I can tell them more about it. L A P D just went through it and they put it through a. Tens of thousands around torture test, heated them up, put them in the mud, put them in the water. And uh they're probably not a better firearm on the market for the money. And it's special, specially made for police.
A citizen cannot buy that that model in the F S.
These are available to you right now.
Uh, about a thirty-day.
That's.
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
So with this, with the new firearm, this is kind of, you know, a little extra, but F N is we'll come down here, though. We'll train us the first time on the red dot site. Obviously, with the new optic site, they they want to train on that. They will also train our firearm instructor as. Armors for these weapons for free. So that's included with the price of the firearms.
We're not really discussing the line of fire.
No.
What we're just discussing the surplus field. Okay.
We're making those available to the officers for.
Yeah, um, the officer. There is eleven.
Any more questions?
Oh, one other. The the format value one is about forgot that. We've priced them at the eighty percent range, so depreciated twenty percent is where the the five hundred fifty per firearm is going to come from. So that's how we figured the price. So eight years, they have twenty percent depreciation, so they've been thirty percent of.
Any more discussion? I made a motion.
I'm motion that we approve the surplus of personal PD firearm.
I have a motion in second. Roll call, please. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen? Councilmember Wise?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I've had a lot on our agenda tonight. Moving on to item number five, public comments, any. On the rest, if you want to, we have three minutes.
And mayor, council members, my name is Carlos Aguilar. I just have a few comments here. So I'm sort of worried about stock materials about the design being completed. That's just my comments. There's uh there is a potential things being wasted. We're actually completely stop materials. We want to save money for the public works. Uh, so the utilities, the site, uh, the streetlights were standalone and we're saying, okay, they were paid out of taxable income. And now we're going to pay for them ourselves. Then I heard something about a slush fund that causes me concern. So, you know, where is the money going to go that that were coming out of taxes that is no longer going to go to the streetlights? Um, and then I was reviewing the sewer uh report. And it says, uh, is the sewer lining in the plan for future, you know, we're going to put the polyurethane in there to prevent. Uh, ground water infiltration into sewers. Is that in our in our five-year plan, our ten-year plan? And then and then also with the plan, it said there's less than a twenty-five percent increase in in our new inputs into the sewer system. And there's a whole lot of construction below that. And so it said in the sewer uh report that we have six thousand of residents in Harrisville. And I think we're about at seven thousand. So I'm sort of concerned about the accuracy of what we're. So about what we're doing. And then uh chief, any of your officers from local community weapons, please contact. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Blake Barrow, I live on seven fifty. Uh, reason I keep coming to these meetings, I I. I come to talk a little bit about the project on seven fifty and not be aware of what was on your agenda. That you guys are okay to agriculture or. Service to uh work a bit. Your architectural work for the for the utility buildings. And from what I'm gathering with that is that what you've proposed over on seven fifty is is an established plan that you have. Are are all okay with. And to put seven fifty with the utility buildings on seven fifty and block off our street with. Thirty to forty-foot buildings right on the street. I'm opposed to that. And I've talked to a a few people like Justin that he talks that he's going to put a pretty fence in front of it. That's not going to have any of the uh structures. It's going to be on seven fifty. Reason that I post that is that, well, we're on that twelve hundred. Most guys put those great big buildings. And obscure all the people that's over there, the view of the mountains or whatever it is. And it's just the backside of nothing. And that's why I keep coming to the meetings in order to discuss some of the things that maybe we should change around. That I guess is still on the table. Why the buildings are going to be architected before anything else. What I'm gathering, that's going to be done first. Am I am I right or wrong? If you're going to have architectural money put out for those buildings, that means that's going to be done first. And I'm a little opposed to that because uh I've worked a little bit on uh secondary water on seven fifty. Which we don't have secondary water on seven fifty. Talking to Justin, uh, he was not aware that there was secondary water close to seven fifty. It's down by the railroad tracks. It goes over to Pleasant View on the east side of the railroad tracks. All we got to do is bring the water up to seven fifty and across the street to accommodate all of the property that the city owns and whatever. Talking to Jenny, she says there is no infrastructure, no money out there available to put that infrastructure in now. I don't know whether when we would be able to do that or we ought to look at what provisions we can do to offset that. Why I bring that up is that from what I understand, it's the involved in the secondary system over at the church. Over at. Over by Walhart or.
You have about ten more seconds, sir.
Right, and uh. If we can get the secondary water in there, there's no reason that we couldn't take these utility buildings and put them behind Donna's property. There's an acre and a half back to her barn in that. Where the pond is supposed to go. Must be an acre pond. I don't know why we would want to put an acre pond over there just for the.
Lady, you're trying to set. I'm sorry. I'm waiting.
Well, maybe I can sit down and get back up again. But uh I would like to have some conversation over that and get with Justin and find out about the secondary water. And from what I gather, uh Jenny tells me within five years, seven fifty is going to be reconstructed. And all those things that can that needs to be done would be secondary water anyway. So I'd like to have a conversation with whoever I need to do from the city to get some of these things done before we spend money on it. Putting these buildings on seven fifty.
Terry Robinson, I'd like to make a suggestion that when you come up with this newsletter, you've had his information beforehand and you had Jenny's information. You should have put that in the newsletter that you were going to come up with, raising our fees for bona fisc beforehand. You should have put that. You should have notified the citizens that their tax bill was going to go up thirty-eight percent in July. That that's already been posted out on the network. You should put that information. You shouldn't be letting the taxpayers know that they're going to be hit with a big tax bill. You guys already have that in your budget. You're 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 placing, you should be proactive in telling the taxpayers that you already have that money coming in on your budget. You should be friendly to the taxpayers. They're your neighbors. You should be treating them fairly. They see you every once a week. I know everybody on here except for Mr. Loveland. I don't know him, but I know the rest of you. I don't know this lady, but I know the rest of you. And you should be truthful to your friends and your neighbors. You should be better than you are right now. You are truthful to your neighbors. You've got so much money coming in. You're not spending it wisely. You're not treating your neighbors and your friends wisely. The senior citizens are taking it really bad. The last two, this coming year, maybe you know the senior citizens will get an advantage. But the prior ten years, senior citizens haven't got any kind of praise. If you work for the federal government or public service. They get social security and they got a pension. If you worked in private industry, you got no pension. But you guys need to step up to that and take care of the citizens. Rather than, you know, there's only thirty people that work for the city for the cities in Harrisville at the most. There are six thousand to seven thousand citizens in Harrisville.
You have about ten seconds here. Ten seconds.
So you need to take care of the citizens rather than just looking out for the for your for their boys.
Anyone else? If not, I'm going to close the public comments for tonight. Moving on to item six, mayor council follow-up. We'll start down here with Robert.
No, just a lot of concerns and friends. Specifically. You have some. And so I just know that's not necessarily at local level, but I have concerns that. It's just a little bit, I don't know what we can hear. I know where you have in open schools and things like that, and that's great. I'm just a concern.
Steve. I think. Kenny. Max. All right, just a couple of things for me to go over with you. Uh, there is, I don't know if you remember Shannon Edwards coming in here and asking for some support for the history. That is the Saturday, June eighteenth at nine AM that started at the cabin, right? Just a little FYI, that uh notice that went out has an address that comes in front of my house, it's in the cabin. So. Anyway, if you know anybody that's going to do that, send them. Second one, uh, we are probably going to have, instead of a July council meeting, we're going to have a truth in taxation, we miss the lawn open house. So we want to make sure that we are transparent. We are here available and have it probably here with more information once it starts. Just so you're aware. Okay. And I don't have anything more, Steph. So I feel that you have a new book that is presented, Grand Rules, that's beyond third credit call. He's actually receiving grant and he can pay for these books to increase our knowledge. Which on our land use regulations. So those copies are complimentary to each of his council members. And a side note with that, he will be, which will, if you do not have any agenda, I have told you before, it's the public of the public council. They'll be appointed in August, but he's accepted the mayor's request to be our authority for Harrisville. Excited to appoint him to that position for the future. Additionally, just one follow-up right up from public comments that we've received. We want to make sure that that information is out to the public. So the budget is on the website on the public notice section available for public review. So that they can see that it was available in the packet for the ten with the budget on May tenth meeting. And it's also there for people to click on, which we should, our people's transparency. All right, we are going to, I like a motion or an adjournment, but we now need to have another meeting, so just if you're older. Okay, so uh item number seven.
Making a motion to adjourn.
All right, so. All right, so motion is second, all in favor? All right, motion carries. Any votes of that? All right, we are now going to convene as a four mile special service district. They're just taking on that role now. So I'll call that meeting to order. We have one item on the agenda. It's the resolution twenty-two dash sixteen, which is the Warren Hollow annexation. So, Jay, please. Thank you, Mayor. So we'll be agreed with this. This is, I think all of you are aware that we, this is the last step in our annexation process. Yeah, it is requesting annexation of the Warren Hollow subdivision, a twenty-two block subdivision located at approximately one seventy-five east slash the lake into the four mile special service district. On February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, a petition was received from Patrick Burns requesting annexation of the Warren Hollow subdivision. On April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, we held a public hearing to take public input for against the proposed annexation. The findings on this report, the proposed annexation petition was filed and accepted by the district. The proposed annexation petition was heard by the city's board. All notices that are properly posted or otherwise given, no protest has been filed during the protest period. The district held a public hearing in accordance with state law and the city council is the acting board of trustees of the district and has the authority to approve this annexation. So staff recommendation is to approve Harrisville, excuse me, resolution twenty-two dash zero six Warren Hollow annexation based on the findings from the staff report. Thank you. Any questions? Discussion now or if not, I'd like to enter your motion.
I motion, we adopt resolution twenty-two dash zero six Warren Hollow subdivision annexation.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Roll call, we also, councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought it was unanimous. Thank you. Motion. Resolution passes and that's it. I would like a motion to your turn. And all in favor? All right, thank you all.